We're going to go ahead and get started at 6:30.
And so we'll call our meeting to order, note that all members are present, and we'll go ahead with our public hearing. Okay, welcome to everyone at the public hearing on the petition of the City of Forest Lake to transfer a portion of Anoka, Washington judicial ditch four to the city for future management. For this hearing, the Watershed District Board of Managers acceded as a drainage authority for Anoka, Washington judicial ditch four. The city has petitioned to transfer approximately 4,000 feet of the buried portion of the main trunk of Anoka, Washington judicial ditch four -- say that a lot of the time -- west of the Fenway Avenue and extending downstream west to its outlet at the open ditch portion of the main trunk of Anoka, Washington judicial ditch four. The stated purpose of the petition action is to allow the city, under its water management authorities, to manage the portion of the system proposed to be transferred for municipal stormwater purposes, to include management practices or modification to the drainage system that facilitate municipal stormwater management, flood damage reduction, and water quality protection. The purpose of this hearing is to receive comments from the public on the petition in order to inform the board of public concerns. The city must show that it is able to better manage storm, surface, or floodwaters along the drainage system or within the benefited area of the drainage system if the transfer is authorized. To grant the petition transfer, the board must determine that storm, surface, or floodwater along the drainage system or within the benefited area of the drainage system may be better managed by the city, including the management practices or modifications to the drainage system that facilitate municipal stormwater management, flood damage reduction, and water quality protection. To facilitate comments at today's hearings, a notice of time and location of the hearing was provided as required, statute section 103E.812. The board accepted the petition and appointed Houston Engineering to prepare a report assessing the impact of the proposed action. Houston Engineering completed the work and filed a report with the board. The petition of the engineers' report were made available for review at the district's offices on its website in advance of this hearing and will be reviewed today. Please note that our proceedings today are recorded. The order of business for this hearing will be as follows. First, Nick Tomczek, the district's administrator, will introduce a presentation of information related to the petition actions. Mr. Tomczek will be assisted as needed by the district's engineer/legal counsel. Following the staff presentation, I will open the public hearing for public comment. The board would like to hear public comments and concerns regarding the proposed actions. Our decision must be based on legal requirements related to the petition actions as well as the engineers' report and other evidence presented. During the public hearing, managers may ask questions of staff and consultants making presentations and of commentators in order to clarify any testimony. In addition, if a member of the public asks a question and a manager believes that response to the district staff or district consultant can readily resolve the question or enrich the testimony, the manager may ask me to have appropriate staff member or consultant speak. However, the manager's expression of their positions and general discussion concerning the subject of public hearing should be avoided during public comment to the portion of the hearing. Board discussion will occur after the members of public have had a chance to speak and the public comment period has been closed. Board discussion may occur and be concluded at that or subsequent meeting as the board decides. Any of the board members have any further remarks or questions before we start? Hearing then, we'll move on to any of the -- I guess we're right up to our administrator. Mr. Tomczek, would you go ahead, please?
There we go. Maybe a few introductions just for our limited audience. Obviously, we have the board of managers here, Tom Schmidt, our public drainage inspector, Katie Embra is here, technician. We have Tim Olson from City Forest Lake. We have Zach Schuster from Houston Engineering. We have Garrett Munson from Houston Engineering online, along with attorney Cole.
There is no other public online? I didn't ask that. Anybody?
I think there is one other. We had one individual shown online there.
Okay.
Tim Who.
Okay. Thank you.
Many things you good folks already know, share with you that Rice Creek is the drainage authority for Anoka, Washington judicial ditch four. The ditches were created and excavated around the turn of the century, combination of tile and open ditch systems for a number of various reasons, reduce flooding, make usable land for crop, fight disease, and these types of things. These are regional outlets for water. It crosses any number of parcels, city and county boundaries, and so being regional in nature, they need a central authority to manage them, and this authority, which Rice Creek is, can be transferred, and that is the purpose of tonight's meeting. Rice Creek does serve as a drainage authority for 116 miles of tile and ditch. The red square on the map is the general area of this public hearing. The authority works to protect the system and the rights of the landowners, which originally asked and paid for the establishment of the system. We are only talking about the drainage authority role today. We can work to address other discussion topics and questions for anyone who has input. Today, again, the role of the drainage authority is acting in response to the petition from the City of Forest Lake for transfer of a portion of the system. And with that, Zach will be joining us here to go through the engineers' report.
All right. Thank you, Administrator Tomczek, Madam President, board members. Just want to give you a quick summary, and Madam President, I appreciate you made the tongue twister joke because I was thinking the same thing.
How many times can you say that?
Yeah, exactly. So to summarize the petition, the City of Forest Lake petitioned the Rice Creek Watershed District to transfer management authority of portions of AWJD4 from the district to the city under Minnesota statute 103E.812. As stated previously, the portion that this includes is approximately 4,000 feet, and so this is from the outlet into the open channel of the main trunk to Fenway Avenue. It's worth noting that not included in this petition is the transfer of the open channel of the main trunk downstream of the drain tile, so authority over that will remain with the district. I guess probably the easiest way -- okay, we can see on pointer. So just to give a little bit of location of this, so the tile that is being petitioned is this portion in pink right here. You can see downstream it outlets into the main channel, which is shown in blue. It's also worth noting that a portion of the drain tile has already been transferred to city control. This is the portion shown in orange, and then this is Fenway Avenue right here. Sorry, go back. Just one thing to note, too, you can see from the aerial photo that this is an area that is developing, and we can see with the portion that was the drain tile that the city has already taken control of, that's already been incorporated into other forms of urban stormwater management, and so that's just important to note. We are currently reviewing a permit application for Hidden Creek that is really the first, probably the first permit that's going to be impacted by this, and so that's one that I'm currently working on for reviewing. Per MS 103E.812, the engineers' report considers the necessity of the transfer for the orderly management of storm, surface, or floodwaters and for water quality purposes. For this petition, Houston Engineering specifically looked at the location of the petition transfer, both the city and the district's roles and experience as drainage authority and in urban stormwater infrastructure management, and then the city and the district's responsibilities in water quality management. If this petition is approved, the effect of the proceeding would be to transfer the authority of the 4,000, approximately 4,000 feet portion of the JD4 tile from the district, which is a 103E authority, to the city, which is a municipal authority. So just taking a look at the location of this, the petition tile and its tributary watershed are both in the City of Forest Lake boundary. The city has, again, has jurisdiction of the tile located immediately upstream, and there's been a comprehensive stormwater management plan for JD4 that has been done and has indicated that both the alignment and/or makeup of this portion of the tile are likely to change due to development to serve proposed developments such as the one that we've seen for Hidden In terms of management of the drainage system, with the development likely, the city can make changes to the petition section of JD4 outside the MS 103E petition process, and so I'm sure that the board members here are very well familiar with the requirements of 103E. Garrett, my colleague who's online, if there are questions about that, what that would entail, he can speak to that more after my presentation if there are questions about that. The proposed transfer is consistent with the City of Forest Lake JD4 Regional Stormwater Planning Report. The report identified the need to transfer all tile to city control. One thing to note, and this came up in discussion before the meeting, is that the city will still be obligated to manage the drainage system to meet the needs of upstream landowners. So just want to be clear that this is not an abandonment of the system, it's transferring control of the management, and this applies to the tile portions only. The district will retain authority over the open channel. And so just to talk a little bit more, though, about that 103E process, if you, the city were to want to, say, change the tile to either a storm sewer or an open channel, they would have to go through what's called the improvement process, and that requires, there's very stringent requirements under MS 103E in terms of landowners that have to petition for that and the process that goes through, and so that, there's less flexibility that the city will have in that situation, and they cannot make the decision for, on behalf of themselves, it needs to have involvement from landowners outside the city.
Go ahead. As we go.
Yeah, sure. The first -- yeah. No, the one that, outside, yes. City can make changes to petition section outside of 103E, yet you said if they were going to change the tile, they would be subject to the 103E process.
I'm sorry for the, yeah, I'm sorry for the confusion. If the tile remained under the jurisdiction of the district for changes to be made, so if this transfer did not occur, then...
Then it would require...
Yeah.
An up, it'd be an improvement system, and the improvement requirements would apply, but if we pass it through to them, then they would escape those requirements. That's what you're telling me.
Yes, sir. I apologize for that.
No, that's my, maybe, that's my confusion. Thank you.
Do you know by chance when that original section was transferred to the city?
I do not, to be honest with you. I know that that's the headwaters development. I imagine it was kind of concurrent with...
Go ahead, Tom.
Madam President, Andrew Wegman, I believe it was 1999.
So obviously, we have a long experience, history with this, and everything has gone according to plan, apparently, or we wouldn't be moving forward on this. Is that my assumption?
Madam President, I would say that our current staff that we have working here, these gentlemen, have corrected the errors that were made when that transfer took place. The transfer took place before any of us, of course, were on the board, but I remember being on the advisory committee at the time, that it was done in a hurry and because of the airport extensions, and that's what caused the trouble we had with Mrs. Moore's property, and basically because at the time, the city nor the district really was tuned in to repairs and, but this is 20-some years ago, Tom's about right on the time, if it's 2000 or 2001, so we've made a lot of progress for, as I said...
Wait for discussion until we're done with the president. These are questions.
Yes. I have a question for you.
Yes.
Yes, so this is part of the, this project is part of the comprehensive watershed management, comprehensive plan, is it not?
It was identified as a, as an action that the city would like to take to fully implement that project, yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to point that out for the record. Thank you.
Okay, you can go ahead.
Thanks. So urban stormwater infrastructure, that was the other part of managing the system. The city, in conjunction with landowners, will likely replace most of the petition segment with what we're calling urban stormwater infrastructure, so this can be storm sewer, open channels, or ponds. The Rice Creek Watershed District has limited authority to order the modifications of the system to accommodate landowner needs in an urban stormwater infrastructure location. The city, however, has extensive experience and the capacity to manage urgent stormwater needs, sorry, urban stormwater infrastructure, and consider water quality and drainage needs. So, Tim, do you know how many miles of storm sewer the city manages?
I don't.
Okay.
I think 105 storm, what stormwater quantity would the city have?
Okay.
The final component that we looked at was, would be the city as a water quality authority, so the city is subject to the NPDES MS4 permit requirements, which require them to limit pollutants entering the stormwater system, and thus, the city adheres to the two objectives similar to Rice Creek Watershed District's for managing the water quality of stormwater runoff. It's worth noting, too, that any project located near this transferred tile would still be subject to the Rice Creek Watershed District permitting requirements, and those are met, those meet or exceed the MS4 requirements, so it would be at least as stringent, if not more stringent, that's still in effect due to the district permitting requirements. So to summarize our analysis of this petition, if the transfer is made, the city would have the flexibility to modify the tire, tile outside the MS 103E process, which is necessary to implement the city's stormwater management plan and, and the Rice Creek Watershed District's watershed management plan. The city is equipped to operate and maintain the JD4 system to the level of service currently being provided, and so the engineer, as appointed, we recommend that the Rice Creek Watershed District transfer authority for the petition portion of Anoka, Washington judicial ditch four to the city. And then one other component of this is that we also recommend that the district's transfer any easements it holds, if there are any, over this portion of the drainage system to the city following the transfer of the system. And with that, thank you.
Any questions?
Madam President, just for clarification, Zach, I have this photograph here from Old Mink. Maybe it's Tim that can answer it. Some I see houses that are already built there, and then on what seems to be the west portion, is that planned? Those lots are planned, is that what it is? I don't see any homes on there. Okay. Thank you.
That's plotted.
It's plotted, yeah, but, yeah, all right.
Okay, thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
And we'll go to the public portion. Seeing nobody here, how about if, if there's anybody else online who leaves a comment, please open your microphone and tell us, name an address for the record. Anybody online? Okay, so there's nobody there, and there's nobody here, so we don't need to... So with that, unless there's any other questions, I think we will go ahead and close our public hearing. So we'll close our public hearing, and then we'll go to our board deliberation guide, which we were provided, and we can talk about if, if anybody thinks we need to go further or if we want to vote tonight. There is any other comments provided at the office anywhere that needs to be into the record? Okay.
Madam President, I do have a couple of questions for Mr. Cole, if I could, on the proposed order of resolution 2022-07. Mr. Cole?
I'm here.
And the order section on page two, capital A has it in the small a, b, and c, the small c says, "The city shall compensate any owner of property benefited by the transaction, transferred portion of ditch four for the loss or impairment of any drainage rights occurring after the transfer." Aren't we finding that there is no impairment of drainage? So what is the purpose of this clause?
The purpose of that clause, Manager Bradley, is to recognize the requirement of that portion of statute section 103E.812. It is in the plain language of the statute as referenced in item A, small i, m, c, and what that contemplates is you're transferring, not necessarily because people won't be harmed by it, although in the present condition, that's true, but you're transferring it because you believe that the city, or you've made a, you want to define that the city can better management, manage this section of the drainage system for its purposes, including municipal stormwater management, flood control, and water quality purposes, and this is otherwise consistent with their comprehensive, what, their municipal water management plan, which I believe the board has reviewed, or staff has reviewed and the board, upon staff's recommendation, approved. So what might happen is, as they modify the drainage system within the city to accommodate the needs of the city, they may end up having to acquire areas for impoundments or retention. They may have to excise those as part of a development agreement, and if that process limits the capacity or the access to the outlet as transferred, then there's a potential damage, and this is just clarifying that that's not a damage you're going to have to pay, but that's a damage that the city's going to...
So what I would like to do is explore with you, Mr. Cole, if there's a way we can phrase this so it reflects that we don't anticipate the transfer itself to cause any harm, but rather, there's, we're recognizing the potential that future actions by the city itself may adjust the benefits that people are currently getting, and I was playing with some language.
Okay.
So what I was looking at was on the second line of paragraph C, the portion of AWJD4 for, and I just penned in, strike the word for, "in the event of any future loss or impairment of any drainage rights occurring after the transfer," which I'm trying to find comfort that the transfer itself isn't going to cause any damage.
Okay, I, yeah, I think I know exactly how you're wanting to phrase that. If it's, if it's okay with the board, unless you want to make those pen and ink changes tonight and adopt this, you could go for the second option, which I believe was to continue it to the next regular meeting, and then you could make those changes to the staff in advance of that meeting. I think I understand exactly what you're saying, and I would walk on it.
And maybe, and maybe, I'm prepared to pen the language, but you may want a chance to look at it, so for that reason. The other thing I'm looking at is, it looks to me like basically a typo in the small A of the same section. Following and accounting of the costs in these proceedings being presented to the city, the city shall pay to the district such costs as are required by statute.
Missing the word "pay."
Correct.
Pay, shall, something, so something that, so, pay to the district is what I think we're missing.
My apologies.
No problem.
John, you're...
Could you speak up just a tiny bit, John, if you could, when you speak?
I can't tell you how many documents I've turned in to official parties that I've later read and said, "Oh, my goodness," so...
Thank you for your understanding.
Yeah, absolutely. So I, I'm prepared to propose those changes if you want, Madam President, if you want to move today, but if you want to give John a chance, or we should ask John if he wants a chance.
Is there any reason, has to be done today, or is everything in motion anyway, or is it going to...
Madam President, first of all, I comment that's a very important change you made in C for clarification, because that's exactly what caused Mrs. Moore's problem many, many years ago. So I thank John for, for including that language in there and your clarification, because once the transfer was done to the city, their construction then caused damage, which we then had to re-correct back in 2007 or '08 along with that. So, so that's a very important, to be sure that we secure any future responsibilities for damages, so. But I don't have any problem letting, giving John the language if you want to wait or doing your...
Well, I think we can wait unless there's a deadline somewhere that we're...
President Priner, we don't know of any urgency. I think the, the parties would just like to keep this moving, and our next meeting on March 23rd would be the next available time.
Okay, is it then on our page two, action two is what we would be looking at for a motion.
So just to clarify, Mike, you had two suggestions.
Those were, maybe two. The first, first one was just to clarify the payment, and the second one was to try to clarify that we don't believe the transfer itself is causing any damage.
Okay. So were there any other concerns?
Not from mine.
Okay. Anybody else?
Only comment, make, support this.
I do, too.
Point that out first, but, and you've heard me say this before, so I apologize for boring you again, but transfers of these to the cities result in the loss of the city property owners. They, they've been paying the city the stormwater tax for the city, and they pay the district the tax also, and they don't have the district managing that portion of their ditch any longer. So to me, that reciprocity agreement, sometime in the, I hope we'll work something out that when these agreements come about and change, that the double taxation doesn't occur or sharing of that money, a portion of it at least that's collected there in the future. And it's not just for this instance, this was, this has gone on in the past, and when we transferred the previous portions of branch one and on this ditch system and others and so on. But that's other than that, that's what, the only comment I had was the issue about, which is a long-term issue, the taxation and the reciprocity of the collected tax. Thank you.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Madam President, I'll move a resolution. We're not moving the resolution. I'm sorry, I'm in the wrong place.
I think I know where we are. Let me try it, if I could. Madam President, I move that we direct staff to prepare findings in an order consistent with the proceedings, including responses to all... Why are we going to go that deep, do we? So let's try again. I'll have to create my own if I could. Madam President, I move that we direct staff to prepare a proposed resolution and findings in order granting a petition transferring a portion of the Anoka, Washington judicial ditch four pursuant to Minnesota statutes 103E.812, and adopting conclusions for our adoption at our next meeting.
For its next meeting, what do you say, March 23rd? For its next meeting, what do you say, March 23rd?
Correct. March 23rd.
At March 23rd meeting.
Okay.
Second?
Motion made second.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nick, your comment? Okay, then we need a motion to adjourn. I think we're done.
I'll move to adjourn, Madam President.
Second.
Motion made second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So this should be pretty straightforward, I think.
Yeah, it is.